Not the one manual labor, I know that.
Yeah, so I might, I might get a used car.
Chris Tentetoo with an hour of lunch.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. Welcome to the January 2nd, 2019 Board of Selectmen Sewer Commissioners meeting. Roll call, all members are present. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody that has any public comment? Okay, you can step forward, identify yourself, please.
My name is Carol Adams.
You can step up to the table.
Okay, sorry, one second. My name is Carol Adams, I live at 157 Angel Brook Drive.
Right here.
You can't, oh, sorry.
I just recorded.
Okay, yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yep.
Uh, my name is Carol Adams, I live at 157 Angel Brook Drive. I'm here to comment on, we received notice of a public meeting for a retail marijuana facility at 111 Shrewsbury Street. And I read the regulations or the bylaws regarding a retail facility or a marijuana facility, and it says that no facility should be within 500 feet of a public park or, a park, playground, public or private schools. This facility will actually, will be right next to the sports facility, which also includes a baseball field, so I, I don't understand how that could be. I spoke with the town administrator, who said that she, someone, the town attorney, determined that because this was privately owned, that it made a difference. Frankly, I don't understand that, and I'm appalled by it, because I think that, I would assume the intent of these regulations would be to protect the children. And whether it's a public park or a private park, I don't think that there should be a facility, a retail marijuana facility, right there beside it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and you know tomorrow night, that group is having a public, oh, no, uh, yeah, that one is.
No, no, the, um.
Tomorrow night.
Manufacturing facility is having one tomorrow night, the retail is the 11th.
No, tomorrow is the.
Tomorrow night is the one you're talking about.
So, unfortunately, I leave for Florida tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Um, is this something?
I'm just.
That will be decided within the next three months regarding this, that I should be?
That, the, the, yeah, we, the town will be moving forward with, well, it's on the agenda tonight.
Right, so you're gonna decide tonight whether or not?
We will start the process with, with some of the, uh, some of the applicants.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you're just taking into consideration what your own rules?
Yeah, we, we have, we have looked into that, and as the town administrator advised you, so, we will look into it, I mean, we have looked into it already, so.
Right, and I've been told that, what the town attorney said.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes, November 28th, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next item is December 5th, 2000.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay. December 5th, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, next item is December 15th, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
December 5th, what did I say, second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, next item is December 12th, 2018, regular session.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Abstain.
And I abstain.
December 19th, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, next is vote to approve warrants.
Make a motion to approve the warrants for the period covering December 13th, 2018, through January 2nd, 2019, including town payables warrant FY 19, '25, '26, and '27, sewer FY 19, SE 13, payroll, 2019, '13, municipal light plant number 17 and 18, and school FY 19, S 10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Next item is presentation of town administrator's commitment to excellent award.
Can we pass over that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Next item is consider approving the FY 2020 insurance rate with Fallon.
Mr. Chairman, we have Ken Lombardi and Joy Laden from NFP, and also Marsha Khan from the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay, whoever wants to come up, if all three wanna cook, just grab another chair. Okay, Anita?
Thank you.
Just put the mic, you don't have to talk.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine, right there.
First off, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
The reason why we're in front of the board this evening is opportunity for the town to lock in this year's renewal with Fallon Health Plan. So, just as the board can recall, our, our healthcare plan renews each July 1st, so we're talking about fiscal year 20, beginning July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. And the committee, Insurance Advisory Committee, and working with our office direction of the town, has been meeting recently to try to conclude an early renewal that is both acceptable to the town, budget-friendly from that perspective, and also to create some consistency with this year's health insurance plan. The board will recall, last year, went through a series of discussions with Fallon, made some plan design changes on the cost-sharing features for the members. All of that went to reduce last year's rate increase, which was high, single digits, about almost nine and a half percent, down to about 6%, which was, hopefully, met the goals, objectives of the town's budget, as well as the employee benefits. Again, our goal this year was to put in front of the, the board, a budget-friendly renewal, as well as to provide some consistency in this year's health insurance plan. With that, we approached Fallon early this year, a lot earlier than we typically do. They were agreeable to present to the town a 6% increase on the health insurance plan under an "as-is" perspective, or in other words, no plan design changes would be recommended. We did a couple of things with that 6%. If you will recall, the, the town's health plan includes several plan options for the members. Fallon has several plan network options, including direct care and select care. And the difference is, direct care uses exclusively Reliant Medical Group providers. Select care is a more robust statewide program. What they did agree to do was keep our direct care plan rates at no rate increase at all. Or in other words, the only increase of 6% rate of increase would be seen by members who are enrolled in the select care. One of the, the issues we wanted to identify and manage too is that more than half of all of the members in the town's health insurance plan, and that's almost 200 participants, and almost half of that population would be entitled to enroll in our direct care network program. Or in other words, there could be a significant number of members who would not see any rate increase at all this year. The rate of increase is 6% on select care, it's 0% on direct care. What that means is, averaged out, is really only a 5.63% budget adjustment. So that's our starting point for fiscal year 20. Our goal was to get the board to approve that, and then establish a series of educational meetings with the impacted members, to try and educate employees to consider direct care during the upcoming open enrollment. We felt we needed this much time in advance to try and get that accomplished. And if we do that, we're likely to see an overall budget increase of even less than 5%. I want to draw attention to the board that what we have perceived and observed in the industry right now is close to 7% to 9% healthcare trend. The GIC, for instance, the state's largest healthcare plan with governmental employees, has indicated a low, as low as 3% for some of their plans, but as high as 7% on others of their plan options. So I think we benchmark fairly well compared to our larger purchasing groups. We look at Meyer as well, which is another joint purchasing arrangement, a number of under 25 cities, towns, and school districts. And some of our clients that use Meyer have actually already been advised to consider potentially as much as a 10% increase. So again, I think our baseline of 6% is favorable to the membership. And again, with some education, we should be able to create a budget, I think, when all said and done with open enrollment, to something less than 5%. So that's the reason why we're in front of the board this evening, to ask the members to authorize the town administrator to sign off on this renewal recommendation from Fallon. I know we just put a one-page summary of information in front of you, apologize that it just got to you now, but if there's any questions, we're happy to answer any of those questions you may have.
Uh, second bullet from the bottom says that 58% of members in the select network are using direct providers on Fallon's network analysis. Is that our members or plan-wide?
So, great question. It's actually the town of, of West Boylston, so it's your unique subscribers, that when they go to the providers, obviously Fallon knows where they're going, they're using, 58% of them are using Reliant Medical Group providers anyways.
There's no, no reason why they wouldn't switch to direct care?
Theoretically, no. I think, I think members generally are concerned, a lot of these members probably still have the old history of Fallon Clinic as being the, the limited exposure that they have, ability to go and see providers. But Reliant Medical Group is over 21 facilities today, it's much different than it used to be historically. I think we just need to continue the education with the membership.
Are, absent these providers they can choose, are the plans essentially identical in coverage?
No, actually, direct care is improved over select care. There's no deductibles as we implemented for select care last year. So we have both a combination of improved benefits. On average, individual members can save about $400 in premium, family members could save as much as $1,000 a year in premium, and eliminate the deductibles.
Do you have an idea, it says, the last bullet is approximately 80% of premium. Do you know about the percentage of, who is it, 80% for us, and who's at 70?
I'm gonna, gonna gather a guess, if that's okay, probably two-thirds of the membership is at 80, 20. Okay, yeah, I apologize, I don't have the actual distribution.
But that number should be going up over the next couple of years, correct?
With history, yeah, will be going from 80, 20 to 70, 30, generally speaking.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. At this time, you know, in the select care, how many are in the select care?
There's 172 subscribers out of 190 are in select care.
How many?
172.
And the direct care?
There's 14, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I need anything to add?
I would, I would just like to thank Ken and Joy for advocating so strongly on our behalf to, to get Fallon to bring in this low percentage rate for this renewal. I think it's, it's great for the town, it's great for the employees, and I would encourage the board to approve this.
One more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, from the select care to direct care, what the major difference?
Major difference? So, members that have select care have to satisfy a $250 individual deductible.
Yeah.
It's maxed out, I think, at $500 for family.
Yeah.
So, that's eliminated under the direct care. So, otherwise, all of the benefits are generally the same, so that upfront cost sharing disappears if you move from select care to direct care.
So why is, why it is cheap?
Because, in theory, it's a narrow network where managed care is more efficient, so essentially that savings is translated to lower premium. And it proves out in our loss ratios, we have a more favorable loss ratio for the direct care population, although it's not completely credible, because there's only 14 subscribers at this point. But ultimately, with more membership moving over, it, it also reduces our overall cost. The other thing I want to point out to the membership is that when the state evaluated provider groups and costing, Reliant Medical Group is the least expensive or most inexpensive plan available, with all of the plan options that are provided within the state. It would be in our best interest to motivate our members to use Reliant Medical Group as mo, as much as possible.
Are they going to pay more money towards hospital visit?
No, they'll pay less.
And, like, emergency visits, surgery, those things?
What's this doing?
It's the same as select.
Yeah, other than the deductible, all of the benefits are the same.
You're covering full.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, good, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve, moving forward with the contract that was presented to us with Fallon.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is consider signing agreement, change order number one for G, CM Geeks Incorporated, website management.
Mr. Chairman? I'm proposing that we modify the CM Geeks contract to add an additional level of service that hadn't been anticipated when we went out to bid for IT services. This change order would provide hours of support on an as-needed basis for website maintenance. As you know, with the loss of our previous IT services provider, the, each department and offices basically doing most of their website posting for their pages themselves. And, for the most part, that's going well, but there are times when either they just don't have the time to do it, are not skilled yet in terms of the process that might be needed for certain types of postings, or there might be boards or committees that really do not have any staff assistance, and they really do not have the ability to access the website. So, this is one prong of kind of filling that gap for making sure that website postings happen as needed. This is based on a $90 per hour fee for FY 19, with only half a year left, they're doing a not-to-exceed limit of 4,860, which equates to 54 hours. For FY 20 and FY 21, they're asking us to allow a not-to-exceed limit of $9,720, which equates to 108 hours. I do not see us exceeding those limits at all. The reason for that is that there's other layers of website support that we're putting into place. We have ongoing training for any of the staff or committee officials who wanted to learn how to do website postings. We have an intern program now with Assumption College, where the interns will be able to do postings on an as-needed basis for any board, committee, staff person, et cetera. And then this would be the third leg of that. So if, if the staff person is not able to do it, they can call Civic Plus and learn how to do it, or they can reach out to the town clerk or to the town administrator. If that fails, they have the ability to work with the assumption intern and get assistance that way. And then if that fails, then they have the ability to seek the services of CM Geeks. So, knowing that we have that three-pronged process, I can guarantee we won't be needing these limits, but this is what we put in on a not-to-exceed level, just for the purposes of having a number in the contract.
How much is the contract with CM Geeks now for the other services?
Excuse me?
The services for the other, the rest of the contract, how much is that now?
Um, I do not have that number in front of me, I'm sorry, it's $30,000 some odd dollars, they showed me the exact number. It was quite a bit of savings of what we had expected.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Is room in the FY 19 budget to absorb that?
Yes, there is.
But, at this time, you know, all the town departments, someone knows it, how to posting, the posting and all, right?
Yep, they, it's great, they are learning, and they're taking advantage of the trainings that Civic Plus does. We're having a meeting about website posting and additional training that might be needed, and that's happening tomorrow. So as I said, you know, the staff is pulling along nicely on this. This is just meant to be a stopgap measure, so to speak, with not having a town administrator there to help for those instances where urgent postings, or last-minute postings, or postings that need to go on the main webpage, might need to be done, this provides that extra layer of backup.
Can they, say suppose, town clerk's office, if they're having trouble, can they talk to another office?
There's only two offices that have site administration to do some of the main website postings. If it's an office or a department, they have authority to only manage their own page. So if it's something that needs, you know, one of those big notices on the front page of the website, they would have to go to the town clerk or the town administrator.
Yeah, but, what I'm asking is, now, if they have trouble, they can go to another office, that's.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Or the intern.
So you think we may not be, we may not be using this $90 per hour rate service?
We will definitely not be using that amount. And a matter of fact, if you want to drop it down, feel free, but, you know, this is something that I felt at least would be a conservatively high number that the town could afford, and it's only to be used on an as-needed basis.
Well, the concern I, well, one concern I have is we need to have a, a process of who's in charge of what. Because town meeting, I have a, a thread of emails that went back and forth, and one person said, "I don't do, I don't post the town meeting, someone else posted." I mean, I don't think we can expect to pay these guys $90 an hour to come and do it, because no one knows who's supposed to do it.
No, no, that issue of not knowing who's doing it has been resolved, is in discussion with the town clerk's office, the town clerk's responsibility would include elections and town meeting postings.
Because the last town meeting, there was nothing posted.
There was only the official notices on the, the news and announcement.
Which should be a main, a main, a main item on the main, on the.
It wasn't on the banner, but it was a news and announcement on the webpage.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead.
Reading this, it says, "The above work authorized by the town administrator." If I'm an employee, I don't know how to do something, I can't just pick up the phone and call CM Geeks and start the, the clock running on this, correct?
Right, in the same way that we need some oversight in terms of who acts as legal support and those dollars, the process would be that, you know, the employee would call up the town administrator, or Nancy, until the town administrator is found, and say, "Look, I've tried everything, I need CM Geeks' help."
Oh, okay, so do we want to stay at those numbers, or do we want to change those?
I don't have an issue with the numbers.
I'll make a motion to approve, as written in, I don't think, I don't think we recommend when they're using that kind of money.
I would hope not.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
If we could just get a quarterly report on where we stand, similar to what we had as, as we move forward.
And just let CM Geeks know also that it needs to be approved before they, just in case someone says, oh, I.
They, we, they know, that's, that, I have that in writing to them.
And is that process that we, you spoke about, is that something that's in writing, that the board can say who's in charge of what, or is that just a, an agreement between the groups?
I can put it in writing.
Do we have a policy, we have a policy for website, is that within the policy, or should it be added to the policy?
This new three-pronged part of it is not.
No, but I'm saying who's in charge of what.
Oh, if you.
So, so, when you're gone and we're gone, does someone know what the process is?
It's in the town clerk's performance evaluation and go, goals for the next year that she would be responsible for town meeting elections, for the website postings.
Okay.
I think it, it should ultimately make its way into the SO, Standard Operating Procedures Manual on, this would ha, this is what happens at town meeting, so that when town clerk turn over, you turn over, we turn over, new town clerk can come in and say, "Yep, that's part of my job, it's in the, it's in the communications plan."
I can, I'll ask her to do that.
Okay, a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consider approving scheduled for May 20th, 2019, semi-annual town meeting. Anita, do you want to go through there? Buddy, go.
Sure. Nancy puts this together on my behalf each year, and this year, planning for the Monday, May 20th, 2019, town meeting, the different dates that need to be met for preparation are, March 20th, we would have the budget presentation to the Board of Selectmen, where the new town administrator will present the FY 2020 budget. On April 1st, 2019, the budget recommendations will then be sent to the Finance Committee for their review. The period of April 1st through April 13th, the Finance Committee Budget Review Sessions will take place, where they'll be meeting with the various different department officials. April 3rd, 2019, is the deadline for warrant article submission to be included in the annual town meeting warrant. April 17th, the warrant articles will be given to the Board of Selectmen at its regular meeting, and see the list of articles to be included. April 24th, the Selectmen will have their public work session, in which you close and approve the draft warrant for town meeting. May 1st is the date that the warrant will be printed and posted, and on May 20th, it's the town meeting.
What's the issue we always have with the capital?
Because we never meet with them.
Yeah, we, can we, I don't know if that goes in here, or how are we gonna, so that doesn't happen again, the first time we hear what capital wants will be when it's presented to us.
I've had several discussions with the capital committee slash Finance Committee about that, and, you know, they're aware that there's an expectation that they would have to meet an earlier date. If you'd like to insert that in here, you could.
Yeah, where would that, um?
I'd like to see it on April 17th.
Yeah, I agree.
So the 1st through the 13th, Finance Committee budget review, would we always also put in there capital investment?
Well, because that's, April 17th is the warrant articles deadline, so what Pat is saying is that they should be prepared to submit their recommendations under the articles.
Right, so, before that, though.
Because what, what always ends up happening is, there's an article that says, "Do you, does the town vote to expend money for cap, from the capital investment board for capital purchases?" That's what's printed in the warrant. Sometimes we find out, you know, on May 20th, there's an addition to it. So if we could have, if they could be given a deadline of April 17th to approve capital purchases, I think that'll give us time to say, "Yes, okay, that makes sense."
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to add that, if they're receiving and can compile the list by the beginning of April, I'd like to see the, the list of what people are asking for, and then on the 17th, we'd have a better idea, versus just seeing it on the 17th, gives us a little bit more, because each department is sending the request to the, to the capital investment.
That, that actually gets vetted by you first, right? The town administrator makes a determination from the initial ask, I'm asking, not telling, from the initial ask before it goes to the CIP, correct?
No, the, what the, the bylaw requires is that the Finance Committee slash Capital Committee is supposed to be making recommendations to the town administrator. The process we've been using is that they come to me just to make sure that everything that's needed to be included is included, meaning that they have to have maintenance records, they have to have written estimates, those types of things. Then I forward them on to the capital committee for their review.
You'll have the list of asks?
Mm-hmm.
If we could, yeah, I think that would be helpful, if we could get that when it's presented to them, if we could just CC us on that, well, at least know that's just the potential of what's coming.
So there are no surprises, or hopefully?
Less.
Less.
So we want, on the 17th, you want them to already have?
I mean, if they're.
Or we want it the Friday before? Because then we'll be, we'll see it the first time on the 17th.
I think if you ask them for their complete warrant article, which will include any items that they voted to include on the warrant, that's legitimate, and if you give the new town administrator that April 1st date by which to provide a list of requested capital items to you.
Okay, then we'll get the list, but then when does the capital investment committee?
I can't speak to, I mean, they set up meetings as they need to.
Based on the timeline, it's April 1st through April 13th, the capital investment committee and the, the capital investment board and the Finance Committee meet this concurrently.
So, so, under that, under that, we should put also?
So they should be meeting?
Well, we should put in the, in that section, capital investment.
Capital investment review.
Yeah, because we just, I, I just, I think the issue is, we usually just see an article, and it says $30,000 for a new truck, and we have no backup information, and then we're voting on putting it on the warrant or not. So we just need the backup information on what they, what they agreed to. By that, I guess the 17th date. Consider approving, so do I have a motion with the changes, approve the schedule? Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. The next thing is review of retail marijuana license applications. Now, I know there were... If members have read, there's four... Well, there's four retail applications right now. So there were applications in the office if they can look at. So the subcommittee met. We looked at each one of the applications. We looked at locations, size of facility, financial, all the different location, traffic impacts. But... And we kind of rated them one through four, the four that we have. The subcommittee, just so you know, we didn't go in-depth. I think when we get to the next stage of the host agreement, that's when we'll look at traffic studies and issues like that. We can ask them questions. So we... The board agreed to go with four different... I guess one and two is all we really need, is the one at... The addresses on these are 111...
111 Shrewsbury Street.
111 Shrewsbury Street. And then the other one, I'm not sure of the address.
65 West Boylson Street.
65 West Boylson Street. So those are the two that we wanted to move forward with, to start the process with host agreements. So these are just retail. We're not looking... We haven't yet looked at...
Growing.
Growing or any other... Only the retail, because we only have two. Any questions on that?
Well, I think everybody needs to know that. There's some rumors going around that they're growing and stuff over there. This is just going to be retail use, right in front of us now.
The only ones we're talking about now, I'm sure at the next meeting, I would ask that an agenda item be put on, and we start the host agreements for the growing facilities also.
But this is just for the retail use right here?
This is just for retail, the ones that are limited. And then the only thing I'd like to add, now, the subcommittee didn't talk about this because it's really changed in the last couple of weeks. I've gotten a call from a few people, Anita's gotten a call from one or two people that asked about the application process and where it stands. I would ask that, even though we have these four applicants, just so we're not stuck, something falls through on these two or three, and we have nobody, I'd like to open the application process for another couple of weeks. I mean, it doesn't cost us anything, and then we might have a better list.
Backup application type things, you're saying?
Yeah, I know.
But are you saying you want to open it up for another couple of weeks? Or we have two, we're going to choose the top two from this list? If, to use an example, it turns out that that's not going to work because there's a ball field there, they can't put the location there?
Right.
Then we go to the... And then we can vet the other ones?
Yeah, and we may... Some of these may be ruled out just for the basic process, you know, just for the basic financial and things like that.
But are you...
I'm asking to go forward with this, but then...
But if we have two viable applicants now, we have more applicants come in, and now we have four other applicants that we haven't looked at yet. Are we going to move forward with the top two based on the people that met the deadline? Or are you saying...
Reshuffle them all?
Reshuffle them all in.
That's not... I mean, what does the board think they want to do?
I think we go with the ones that we have here, because they met the deadline.
But I just want to have those other people that are asking, have them in here so they know their applications in, in case we fall in, because then we're just... We're not going to... You know, we might not start the host agreement for two, three weeks, and then they fall through. We go to the next one, two, three weeks, and then before you know it, we're putting the applications out.
And just for the public, how many people in the committee that went through this? There was four applicants, and you recommended two.
And we rated them one through four, but the top two are the only two that we need to...
I read through all of these applications. I could flip-flop one and two, and I could flip-flop three and four, but the top two that the subcommittee rated, it's... There's no comparison to the bottom.
You can't flip-flop three and two, one and three?
No. One and two are... It's clear, based on my review, that the ones that are one and two, again, they could be two-one, and the ones that are three, four, could be four-three, but the bottom two were nowhere near as good an applicant as the top two.
Okay. I mean, like you say, looking at... We may find that traffic is an issue, you know, on the ones... Really, the other three, two, three, and four are all on West Boylson Street. So, I mean, that could be an issue. I don't know. I mean, so I just want to have other applicants in place.
I have an issue with that.
Yeah, so I guess...
And also, you know, to add on to that, the subcommittee is not eliminating any application, any applicant. We just rank them, one, two, three, four.
Right.
So if, as you said, you know, one and two is not working, then we can always go back to three and four, or we may choose to not go three and four, too.
Right. We could find out after we look deeper into these, the financials, they don't even have the basic financial, you know. But I don't think the subcommittee should have done that. I think this is a good start. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to... Should we get a motion to start working on a host agreement with the first two on the list? Is that what we should do?
Sounds like it's a two-part vote that needs to take place, whether it's the same motion or two separate motions. But if you want to all move ahead with starting to look at the top two ranked applications, that could be one motion and vote. And then you're talking about potentially reopening the application process for additional applicants for some period of time. That could be a separate motion and vote.
So the vote would be on the first vote would be to...
To begin negotiation of a host community agreement with the top two rated applicants.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
I'm not clear on one point, you know. So suppose we are extending the application date. What if somebody comes up? We are working on the first two applicants here. What if the third one is... The new applicant is better? How are we going to...
I don't know. I would have to rule out these.
Well, I... That's why I asked the question. I think we're looking for backup applicants at this point. Even if the person comes in after the deadline, these people met the deadline, if they're viable...
So we are giving a first preference for this, first and...
That's what I would say.
Maybe you have to be very clear on that, right? So somebody cannot be saying, "Hey, I did..."
Frankly, I would say the first preferences for one and two, if one and two are not viable, I... Looking at the applicant story that were ranked three and four, I don't think that they would be a candidate for a license.
I agree, but if the new applicant comes in, he could say, you know, "Hey, I'm also on the deadline. You opened up the deadline. You extended the deadline."
No, I think we should negotiate with one and two.
So we may have to put a condition like, you know, only if this one and two fails, you will consider...
I think the posting for the applications, as Pat just said, we're opening up the application process for backup applications, you know, not to be into the mix with these four.
To be considered if you do not find two fully qualified applicants to negotiate a host community agreement.
Yeah, that will be the best.
And then on one of the... You gave me the... Or you have the... I believe that the applicant number two, the 65 West Boylson Street, we have the actual financials. The Harmony that is applying for 111 Shrewsbury Street, they listed in their application the things that they have done, but they didn't give any actual proof of this is how we're going to fund this. So I want to see from this group, I want to see where the money's going to come from to do the build-out, to do all of these things.
And that's all of what you can ask during that process of negotiation of the host community agreement?
That's what I... Yeah, that's kind of what I...
Okay, I wasn't sure when the time was. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I... So the first motion was to, I believe you said, to start negotiation of host agreement on one and two.
One and two, yes.
I don't know who made the motion, but it was a motion. And a second, any other discussion on that issue?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the second motion would be in regards to open up the application.
To open up an application if these one and two do not work out.
If these four don't.
Do we want to put a timeline on it?
Yeah, I'd say, what do you think?
Do you want to name the one and two, or you just call it one and two?
We did name it.
I did. I said who they were. I said the addresses.
Two weeks.
Yeah, the 20...
What's the date today?
We could go the 25th. That would be three roughly, the 18th or the 25th.
Go the 18th. We go with the next selection.
So then the... No, that would be past the next selection meeting, so... Yeah, so would the 18th? Is anybody...
We could always... If nothing comes in, we could just send it as a...
Did you make that motion?
Yes.
So with the 18th. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just for clarification, because I have to modify that website photo. So we are going to announce that we're reopening up the application process for retail facilities until January 18th for the purpose of receiving backup applications to be considered if the existing applications fail to produce two valid host community agreements.
Perfect. That works for me.
That's what I said, isn't it?
We'll play it back and see.
Exactly.
Very good.
So, and then, I guess, now we're on the selectman's request, I'd like to put an agenda item for the next meeting, Nancy, that we move forward, at least look at the... Because I don't think the subcommittee, Anita, do we plan the subcommittee to look at the other ones? No, really? Because they...
At that meeting, the committee made no discussion about next steps on that.
Yeah, because really, we could... There's no limit, so we could have host agreements with all of them.
You could.
So in the next meeting, we discuss the process in regards to the non-retail, everything else besides retail. And then... Go ahead.
What's the process going to be to negotiate the host agreements?
That's... Is that a public... Is that a public meeting?
I would recommend that it be public meetings.
Okay.
You have received a template from KP Law for host community agreements that they've used effectively in other communities. You've also received sample host community agreements from other towns that they've used. So I would recommend that the board vote to use the KP Law template, but with the understanding that it will be modified to reflect the individuality of agreements that you've worked with any licensed applicant. And, you know, it really depends on a situation-by-situation basis in terms of the things you might feel need to be included in that host community agreement. But I would recommend you at least start with the KP Law template.
Okay. Do we want to at the next meeting? And then we have a few towns' host agreements that we could look at. Were those sent out to the board?
I left copies of some from Athol on the table, and others I emailed to you that came in after that.
The KP Law one, was that emailed to us as well?
It was. I can re-mail it out if you'd like.
Well, I can search through the email and find it.
So maybe the next meeting, we can also put... Then we talk, we just... After we look at the host agreements, we first discuss it as a board, and then maybe invite number one in first, or number two in first, and then start the process. Is that a good idea? So we can all look at the host agreements. If there's any questions or concerns from the board, we can do it on that day, instead of having them in front of us when we're doing it.
And then do you think you schedule them later on in the meeting, or...
I'd probably say another time, I would think, but that's up to the board.
Well, I mean, that means we're pushing it out four weeks.
No, it doesn't have to be on the next selectman's meeting.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Maybe we need a little extra time for that. Go ahead, Anita.
Just, you know, well, I recommend that you have these discussions be open meetings because, you know, the public is going to be concerned about, you know, what this all involves and means for the community. But it doesn't mean that it has to be part of a regular selectmen's meeting.
Right.
Excuse me. Nor does it mean that it has to be the full board of selectmen. You might establish a subcommittee of your members to be the ones that work on, you know, that negotiation process. It's up to you how you decide to do it.
Do we want to discuss that now or at the next meeting? After we look at the host agreements?
I don't think we should... I mean, this is... It's not time-sensitive, but we have two businesses that are looking to come to town that are going to generate revenue. I'd like to do it, you know, while I don't want to ram it through, I don't think there's any reason why we have to wait two weeks to make a decision on the process.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, they do need to go through the community outreach meetings. Right? Well, at least both... One is having a community outreach meeting. The other one nowhere near community outreach meeting.
Well, we don't know. Well, that would be... We can't do the host agreement if they don't have the community outreach meeting.
It's not a mandatory fact that the town is putting on the applicants, but the state requires that they have done the community outreach meetings.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, it's premature for us to give an host agreement if they don't do it at community outreach meetings, and also we won't be getting any comments from the public, too.
You could do it either way.
Agree.
As far as the process, I'm not saying that we have to have a host agreement done in a week. What do we want to do as a board? Do all five of us want to be involved? And do we want to do it as a five-member board? Or do we want to have a subcommittee? I don't...
If it is an open meeting, you know, why not all five?
I don't have an issue with all five. I want to... I definitely want to be involved in it.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. So do we want to set a date? We could set a date for the first one, or do we want to look at the host agreements first and discuss them as a board, or just go right to... Would we ask the applicant to look at the host agreement and give us their input on it also? Before the...
You could.
So I agree that the host agreement discussion with the facilities people should be an open meeting, but I think we can... We should probably have an executive session to discuss the negotiating strategy around the host agreements.
I don't think it falls under executive session.
I don't think it falls under any of the provisions that allow for executive session.
So it's a negotiation?
It's establishing, you know, what... It's establishing the rules, so to speak, as to what the community expectation is for this facility to come and start operating this business in town. And the host community agreement is meant to identify conditions of sorts that the selectmen would want to have in place if that community ends up getting a license issued by the state and then by the planning board. So those types of conditions might be, you know, we're very concerned about the hours of operation. Or the conditions might be, we're very concerned about traffic impacts, and we want you to do this, this, and this. You know, so it's... You know, so it's, if you look at it more as an opportunity to outline the conditions that the town would be placing, including financial conditions, because part of this is the town's ability to set, you know, a value on the added cost of hosting this business in town. Although each applicant, as you've seen, has pretty much already said that they're willing to do the three percent right up at the top.
Okay. John?
So, is it the same host agreement for every, both people? It would have to be, wouldn't it?
No, not, so, it depends, as I said, it's a case-by-case basis, so, you know, it, how, traffic, you know, impacts, or, or the need to have police detail or that type of thing.
I don't want to stop, you cut you off, but this, I asked, this wasn't a gender item tonight. That's why I'm wondering. I just wanted to say we need to stop the discussion on it. So do we want to put this on the next meeting to do what we're doing right now?
Okay.
Post that we're going to talk about the host agreement, and then set something up?
Okay.
Is that, I mean, because I, the only way we can really go through ironing this out the way we want to do it is, I think we should let the public know that it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Fair.
So those two items we can add, and then, again, we can maybe say, you know, next week, on Tuesday, we can sit down with these people and start the process, once we get through. If everybody can look at the host agreements and see if they have any questions.
Can I make a suggestion?
No.
Can we, can we get, Nancy could find out, you know, from the Leicester or other towns, what they did, how they negotiated the host agreement, in an open meeting, or how they did.
Yeah, for the next, for the night, yeah, for the next meeting.
That's a good idea, right?
Good, good idea, John, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Along that line, now that these people know that they're in the top two, it would give that other company time to set up a host. Maybe they were waiting to see where they fell in. I don't know, but at least...
I don't know, yeah, I, it's...
Do we have to give them...
It's not, it's not up to us. It's up to them completely.
Or do they contact us? Do we have to give them notice of the decision tonight? Or do they contact us?
We, we did not say we would be notifying anyone formally after tonight's meeting.
The next call from us will be that we want to sit down and you can look over, you know, in a week from now, we want to discuss.
I'm sure they'll be interested.
I'm sure they're ready. I'm sure they've already looked at all this stuff.
Again, you know, these applicants, they applied here, they applied in Worcester, they applied in several other communities.
And that's, and that's some of the reason why that second prong of applicants, maybe they're going to call, we're going to call them, and they're going to say, we already, we're done, we already got our license, or we already got our area, and we set up a host agreement, so. Okay, so, next item is, consider signing mutual aid agreement for inspectional services.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you know, in our long efforts to try to get coverage for our building department, we were working with our regional planning agency to try to see if there was opportunity to do regional assistance between communities on building inspectional services. And one of the things that CMRPC came up with was this mutual aid agreement for building inspection services. And basically, it's a document that any community who wishes to participate would sign and submit to CMRPC to work with other towns on the standard mutual aid basis, meaning that if a community needed assistance for building inspectional services, whether it's review of plans, if it's site inspections, if it's, you know, final reviews, you name it, that any communities who are participating in the mutual aid agreement can reach out to each other to get assistance on an as-needed basis. And as happens for mutual aid in both police and fire, there is no money paid to or from between the communities. The sending community covers the cost of the wages of the time that their building inspector is sent out to the other community and vice versa. So, this is one option that might help provide an extra layer of coverage for the community for building inspectional services moving forward. I did run this by George Tignor, our new building commissioner, and he thought this was a good idea.
Well...
Go ahead.
Is there any towns that are in disagreement so far?
No, no, everyone's kind of looking at it right now.
Okay, no, I think it's a good idea, just...
But it's, it's...
The only town, it's not going to be much help.
It's a mutual aid agreement where this...
No mutual aid yet.
There's no, no money being, changing hands.
Correct. It's on a voluntary basis. So, say three towns have signed up for it. Say West Boylston really needs to have someone come in and do a plan review. The two other towns may say, no, I'm sorry, we just, we can't do it, we're, you know, we cannot help you. It's too much work, we can't, you know, we can't afford to pay our inspector to go to your town for all those hours needed for your plan review. And those communities have a right to say no. It just provides another opportunity for, I see this more as being a case of when our building commissioner is out sick, or he's on a vacation, and inspections need to be done, as you know, they need to be done within a certain amount of time. This provides us that extra layer of backup.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, it's, it's nothing like a police and fire, because they can't say no.
No, they cannot say no, that's correct.
So, I mean, this is more like, I mean, I can't, I can't, I guess we can, we can say, let's look into it, but I, I can't imagine why communities would say yes to this. I mean, really? What would be the advantage?
If Boylston, because if, like Anita said, if George was on vacation or something like that, and they'd, somebody needed a foundation inspector, you call Boylston or Sterling, they come down and look at it.
They pay for him?
No, you don't, no. They pay for it.
Yeah, I, yeah.
They do the same thing. I mean, you, you use it probably three times a year.
Right, we may use, we may use, you know, we, I don't know.
Why, why would it be at no cost to the requesting town?
Yeah.
That's what I don't understand. If, if we need somebody to review the plan, and...
We should pay for it.
It's $600 worth of salary and benefits.
So in this, there's a provision that the two towns can agree to some compensation for the services, it's on an individual case basis. So it doesn't, it doesn't prevent the town from getting compensated for sending their person over to assist us? It just says the basis of this mutual aid agreement are that you don't get paid for it unless you have an agreement with the community that you're helping out.
Well, then, that's, that's shared services, then. That's not a mutual aid agreement.
Well, no, I mean, it, it becomes an individual case, not a case, interminable agreement.
Yeah.
Another place it might work if someone couldn't, didn't know, they're doing a certain job, and the other town wasn't familiar with it, and these people had just done the same job, they could send over here and do it.
I guess it doesn't, it wouldn't cost anything to say that we're interested in looking into it.
I, I think it would be a nice thing to try, to see if it can build some regional alliances.
Yeah.
And as you know, this is going to be a growing area of concern for all communities, trying to find qualified people to do building inspection services. So, any extra tool that we can put in our toolkit, I think is worth looking into.
Yeah, I, I think we could look at this, and I think we should also, not today, but if, in the future, look at some type of shared services on this, that, you know...
We tried that through CMRPC, as you know, and it didn't work.
Didn't work. Okay.
So, I mean, this is an actual agreement, are you looking for a vote to approve this?
Yeah, actually, I would be asking the board to authorize the chairman to sign it so we can get it submitted in.
Make that motion.
I'll suck it.
Any discussion, Pat?
No.
You're thinking.
No, it's okay. I don't think it's going to work, but that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you for your philosophy.
Tell us how you really feel about it.
So this is a mutual aid agreement, okay, so we have a motion and a second, and it's, I guess there's a spot for all the board members to sign, so, um, do I hear...
Oh, yeah, trace the chapter, sign it.
There's five lines, so I can't, only send all five? So I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consider approving the hiring of a new custodian for the police department. Do we have that information?
So this is a current that the board would approve hiring Thomas Feller to, of Sterling, Mass, to be the new part-time custodian at the police station, beginning January second, grade one, step two, thirteen dollars and seventy cents per hour. He's scheduled to work eighteen hours per week, it's a fractional time position.
Do you all believe?
Yes.
No, okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion? A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none.
Can I just ask, you're quick, Chris.
You mean some?
Does he, is, is, do we know him? Is he familiar with the building, or has he...
He's been doing the same services for the town of Sterling. That's what I thought. I just wanted the public to know. He's been working at a police station.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to understand that.
So is he staying in Sterling? He's going to work both towns?
I believe he's going to work in both locations.
Oh, good. Okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Show on.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Employee requested employee satisfaction, satisfaction survey.
Yeah, there's, there's no action needed on this tonight, but I just wanted to present to the board, the, there had been talk about doing an employee survey, and really, it never got off the ground, so, at a staff meeting, we discussed it, and we had several employees offer to help me put together some sample employee surveys that they would like to see the town use moving forward. There's two versions, you have one that was in your packet, and then you have version B, which is in front of you tonight. No action is needed on this tonight, but I did promise them that before my last day, I would submit these to you for consideration to move ahead with an employee survey.
Now, the person that helped us on the other...
Nomar Chanis.
Is she, is Nomar still going to help us out with this one?
Um, yet to be determined. I mean, she had originally said she might be interested, but she would have to be checked, you know, contacted again and asked.
Okay, so should the subcommittee look these over? Pat, Raj and I looked at the other one.
Yep.
Should we...
It was, it was something that the subcommittee had mentioned doing, but it's been taking so long in the citizen survey that, you know, this was sidetracked.
So, Nancy, can you make a note to let me know, and we'll try to get the committee together?
Sure.
And we'll check with Nomar, she'll help us out with this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, meaning employees. So, is version B the one that the employees came up with, and the one that was in our packet? Or are we looking at a combination of both?
You're looking at, at both. I believe version B, there were a few last-minute changes that happened after the one went into your packet.
Okay.
But, you know, really, there, you'll see that there's some differences in terms of how they approach the questions. So I think it would be, you know, up to the committee, the subcommittee, to decide how they want to approach it. I was really, I was very pleased with the employee group that worked on that.
Okay, so we'll try to meet on that and see. The, the other one, is it on this agenda?
No.
So the other one may be going live soon.
Yeah, I had sent you an email, but I haven't heard back from you giving that.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's any issues to start with.
No, I don't think, no issues, I don't think.
Yeah, I'll talk to you then, and then, and then we'll live. Consider designating a member of the board to be the liaison to the fire department. And this is in regards to, not in regards to the issue I talked about, in regards to...
No, just more in terms of, you know, some of the difficult decisions that were going to need to be made for FY twenty funding, and things that, you know, the whole discussion on that, how it might impact the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind, if I, I've, I worked pretty closely with them when we did the salaries and the, so, I would, I'd be happy to do that, if you'd like.
That's why we're in the mess we're in, because of, you know, help.
I do, I do what I can.
Designate John as the, designate to the fire department.
To make a motion and a second, any other discussion? Any other discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Review approved the final list of gift items to be purchased, with the fifteen hundred dollars...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand dollars for Steve, I can never get his name out.
Megrishin.
Megrishin.
For the council on aging. So we have the list back. Is it on the agenda? Yes, it is. So how much does all this come out to?
Eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two, and some change.
So what do we do? Just take the other monies and just put them in an account for future use?
Hold it until you have other approved items.
Okay, now, was this, was this list looked over by a professional to say that that's the items this kitchen needs?
I was told that they worked with, excuse me, this firm to choose what was necessary.
Any discussion on this issue?
Could you just go over the list so the public knows what's on it?
Like, six pages?
Well, no, just in general, I mean...
It's pretty much, everything's for the kitchen. I don't see much...
Well, there's three separate purchases. There's, there's four thousand...
Four thousand, seven ninety-nine from...
That's, that's for the stage. So there's forty-five hundred dollars worth of stuff for the kitchen, pots, pans, everything you need to, to run a kitchen, besides the stove, and, and sinks and stuff. Then there's forty-eight hundred for a, for a portable stage.
And which stage are they, do we know what stage they're getting under this? I'm looking at one without, without any railings or anything.
I think there's a question about that, because there wasn't a handicap ramp with that one.
I don't think there's a handicap ramp with either of them.
And that was brought up, was it not?
Yeah.
At the first meeting?
Mm-hmm.
When they were talking about the stage?
I thought they were going to, uh...
I don't know, on a portable, how you, the ramp would probably be, depending on the height, it would have to be pretty long.
It is. That's what they're saying, it's like twelve feet.
So...
And then, the last item is twenty-four hundred dollars and change for dance mirrors, or, I assume, for the exercise classes.
Okay, so, Nancy, now, it's on wheels. Is the dance mirror on wheels?
Well, it looks like that one's wheels.
Okay, so do we need to, before they purchase this, do we need to get clarification in regards to if it's allowed that we get the stage? Any...
Excuse me.
Sorry, I'm trying to go quick, and do you want to go out? I think we're done.
We, uh...
The stage is really crying because of the stage. She's got a cold.
They can make an handicap ramp, right? Now, it's only, only a small area.
It would have to be portable.
Entire thing? Entire thing, you don't need an handicap, it's just a wheelchair to go up.
Yeah, but it has to be a certain, if it's this high, it has to be a certain length. So, it can't be, you know, like this. So I, I don't know.
They can build it.
Well, I, I think...
No, it can't be built, it has to, this is portable, so, it can't be, it has to be, they might offer a folding.
I believe they're going to, uh...
Look into it?
Look into it tomorrow, so, at the meeting tomorrow, we might have a better answer than that.
So do we just want to...
It would be in addition to that anyhow.
Approve, approve this as it stands with the, to, with the clarification of how we're going to do the stage?
Right.
Because we have a few more thousand if we have to buy a ramp.
We're definitely going to have to buy a ramp.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'd make the motion to approve the listed items with the clarification of the ramp on stage.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Hearing no discussion?
Do we know if Steve, I know we had asked, Steve, Steve had asked to have some input, was he okay with these items? Did we, did we get an answer from him on that?
He did, excuse me, he did have some conversation with Lisa. His last email that he received basically said that he just wants to make sure that what's being purchased with his gift is something that's durable and somewhat sustainable.
But clearly, these aren't.
Yeah. And then we're, you know, I think we're almost at the next stage to get the next fifteen thousand. That fifteen thousand may go into an account. We're not going to spend it just because it's there. It may go into an account, and we find out six months, a year from now, that, boy, they need something else. But I don't think we should just be forced to put a list together and, before we get the money, because it, that'll be just rushing. I know one of the things we're looking at is some furniture for outside, maybe that can be purchased with that, but I'm just saying, that's... So I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, general updates on the senior center? I don't think there's, moving right along.
Moving along, they're in the last stage, hopefully within this time, sometime this month, we'll be finished. We hope, we're close to it.
And then invoices, do we have any? I don't believe, Anita, do we have any from the last?
No.
We already voted on them. Okay, next item is concurrence on the appointment of Peter Girardi to the position of permanent patrolman effective January seventeen, two thousand nineteen, for a term to expire January sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, at step three patrol officer, thirty-two twenty per hour.
Second.
This is to replace an officer that left, correct? This is a...
No, he, this is a guy that was on one-year probationary period, and...[1635.82] No, this is a guy that was on one-year probationary period and.
So this is just to?
It's just to make him permanent.
Make him permanent. Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Concurrence on the appointment of Sergeant James Bartlett to the position of constable, effective January 6, 2019, for a term to expire on June 30, 2022. Fair motion.
Someone. Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion?
I've asked this before, what does the consti, what does a constable do? What is that?
Can serve warrants, papers as needed, ordered by the court, can cover elections.
So, not every officer can do that, only once it designated a constable?
When appointed.
Okay.
And it could be, it doesn't have to be offices, it could be other people, let the chief make statements. Okay, a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll ask that question again.
Next time we appoint a constable, we'll put it on the agenda. Review list of applicants for the Town Administrator's Search Committee, and I believe we're going to appoint the committee to move forward. So, already myself and Mr. Hadley are on the committee, the next is employees, boards, committee members, applications, and then we have residents. Besides the list, we have one more resident, I think everybody has the application or.
Who knows?
Emailed, no, the third person is, oh, he's not on my list, okay, I have an old list. Okay, so do we, do I have any discussion or motions? The applications are in the file.
So it, it looks like employee board, committee members, everyone is good, and everyone is qualified, so it's a very difficult choice to make.
Well, I, I think, you know, I hate to rule people out, but some of them can't be, can't be around for like, the month of, the month of January, you know, I don't know exactly, remember which ones, but, you know, that's probably the, January, February might be the peak time that we're going to stop meeting in regards to this issue, so. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, wait, Pat, did you have some, sorry?
No, no.
No, go ahead. Motion to make Mark Frieden for the Town Admin Search Committee.
Okay, so one member would be Mark Frieden, any questions, or, or a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second.
I, I'd like to make a motion that.
Any other discussion on this one?
Motion.
Push me, you're pushing me.
I'm just going through it and trying to see if people have.
We need two from that committee.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just looking for people that have either hired people for a different kind of positions, and I don't see a lot, I did see a couple of different positions, so I just want to make that noted, that we would like to have people that have some background in either hiring or business background.
I think when we get to the resident applicants, that might fall into place, the, the board members, I mean, you can, you know, they have to be, they have a, they have another criteria to be in on it, so. So a motion and a second for Mark Frieden, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I think we should, Butch Jackson is the only member of the, the, employee of the town that has actually applied, so I think it's important, that was our, our goal in the beginning, I think it's important to have some, to have an employee of the town on the committee, and I'll, I'll make a motion that Butch, Vernon Jackson, be the second member from the employee board, our committee members.
I'll second.
Just in, during discussion, that, personally, I, I don't think of a member that that person supervises should be on the committee, but if, if the board votes that way, I mean, I'd like to, personally, I would like to have seen somebody, I mean, there's a member here from the school committee that, you know, works with the town administrator, you know, in regards to budgets, I know the superintendent does, but that's fine, I just.
Again, you know, you know, even if it is a town employee, he's not going to be the one making addition on selecting a town admin, right?
Oh, of course, yeah. But he's one of the members that's going to be, going to be at, you know.
Screening, after screening, he will be done.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, a, a opposed, so, we're all set. So those are the two members in regards to the resident applicants.
Make a motion for Danielle White, reading her resume, she looks like she has a lot of experience in, in business and, uh, human resource.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, and that, she's one that stood out, just reading, and what she's got for experience.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
They need to have a recommendation by the end of the month.
Without applicant.
And we want to thank everybody that obviously applied.
I appreciate, yeah.
It's a, you know, a lot of them, we would love to have, but there were just time constraints they had and stuff like that, we couldn't use, but.
When does the applications close, NC, or, they closed today, so.
Do we have 100, 200?
So maybe, I can discuss with you, and maybe we'll contact these people and try to set something up. You're going to be away till what?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, so now something next week, so, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, is it fair to say, Nancy, we have a handful, or applications? I believe we have, maybe, I think I have 14. Okay, just curious, thank you.
And it closed, it closed today, so, that's what you have is what you have. And I know, okay, I'll wait, I'll wait a minute. Our next announce, review list of, announce that the town has received recognition for being a central mass center for hard-to-recycle materials. Hmm. Any, any, any comment on that? I, that's fine.
I think it's just a good bit that those volunteers are doing over there, I think it's great.
Okay, announced recognition from Lieutenant Governor for completion of the town's first community compact program projects. Future agenda items, select, or just under meetings and invitations, I also have, so, January 3, 2019, is a community meeting at 6:30 PM at the Manor for 111 Shoesbury Street, that's correct, right? And then, I, I don't see this, but I think it's right, on 10/19?
January 10th, there's a.
Yeah, Jan, yeah, 10/19 at 7:00 PM for 215 Shoesbury Street. That's, the first one's a retail, the second one is a manufacturing transportation, so that's two, 10/19 at 7:00 PM at the Manor Restaurant, that's for 215 Shoesbury Street, they're both at the Manor Restaurant. So, any other future?
Can I add on one line to that?
No.
So though we are going for an, you know, we have chosen the first two applicants, it doesn't mean, you know, we are final with those applicants, that doesn't mean those locations are final, so we are, we have to negotiate the host agreement, community outreach, based on that, we'll be deciding, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
So it seems like, you know, we're, okay, we are done with this, so that's not the case here.
I don't think we're done till one opens the door. Yep, and then the, I think we should put on a future agenda, I don't know where we left this last time, but the next agenda, we should decide what we're doing in regards to a temporary town administrator. Nancy, can we add that to the next agenda?
Sure.
That'll be in a couple weeks, then we can maybe start the process of putting someone on.